Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Adoption of agenda, I'm not aware of any additions or deletions.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I'll support. A motion by Winger, seconded by Brock to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion's carried. Thank you. Public input. According to the Board of Education Policy 176.3, the Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on district matters. Members of the public may address the Board of Education during public comment for up to three minutes. Speakers will be recognized by the presiding officer of the Board and are asked to state their name, address, and group affiliation if applicable. As a reminder, all comments shall be directed to the Board and not to staff or other participants. No participant may speak more than once. Participants may not behave in a manner that is disruptive to the orderly conduct of the meeting. The Board of Education does not respond to public comment. The superintendent will follow up with speakers when appropriate. So at this time, we will begin public comment. Is there anyone who would like to address the Board? Okay, last call. Okay, well, thank you for coming tonight. Okay, public hearing presentation. It's the public hearing on proposed property tax mileage rate and 2025 and 26 budget.
Yes. All right, well, thank you so much. I apologize in advance for the time this may take. But with that being said, I'll just jump right in. So tonight we have, sorry, we have the four different funds, general fund, food service fund, and the student school activity fund, as well as public library fund, where we need to cover both the final budget for the 2425 and then also the appropriation for the 2526, and then to discuss the tax levy that we'll have on the district. Okay, so with that being said, if you can see, here is a high-level overview from where we were at, from the 2324 is the actual, and then Chris had the appropriation budget, and then I did the revision one in the middle, and then ultimately where we're at tonight for the final budget in the appropriation one. Couple big things I want to highlight here is, we're still looking to do the transfers for capital projects of the 950 and the food service for 75,000. In total, you can see that our deficit has grown slightly from revision one to the final, from 604 to 666,000, then ultimately leading to appropriation budget of 1.5 million, or just shy of that, which is roughly 14.21 percent if both of the $666,000 and the $1.5 million come to fruition. Okay, looking at revenue specifically for the 2425, this is broken down by the different sources that you can see here. You can see, in total, we're looking to drop about 493,000. Most of this is from the local sources and state sources. So we'll get a little bit more in-depth on that as we proceed forward. Okay, back in February, I had, the left side of this was a full slide. Not sure if you can see the numbers, but it's based on a blended enrollment. So how enrollment works is you take the previous February count, which is 10% of the budget, and the other 90 is the following October count. February of 2024, we had 3,115 FTE, or, which is full-time equivalents, or think of that as students. October of 2024, we had 3,085. So at that time in February, we had a blended enrollment of that 3,088.36. The picture on the right is from our auditors on April 17th. We had unfortunately some audit adjustments, a 4.57, and then we had what's called Section 25 adjustments, which is if students go from one district to another in between counts, those districts can claim the FTE, and therefore we lost another 8.22, and then a small credit. But that bottom rate number of 3,072.74, that's the 90% number, and unfortunately now with that being 90% and the 3,115 being the other 10%, we're just shy of 3,077 FTE in total that will be paid for based on this year. Okay, other revenue changes that I saw, taxable revenue, typically we have about 3.5 million, based on actual that we received. We're down about 141,000. I've been working with a lot of the counties, or the townships, and then also the four different counties that we have that all give taxes. Outside of that is recognition of categorical funding. As you may have seen, on the state sources, you saw a decrease, and that's because we have a lot of revenue and expenses on both sides of the equation where we're looking at moving forward some carryover funds and therefore are not able to recognize those funds. We did this strategically based on a lot of grants that will be falling off this year in hopes that we can maintain the level of staffing that we had this current year. As you can see, the enrollment, that additional drop of 11.37 FTE, if you multiply that times our foundation allowance, which is 9,608, you can quickly see that's a deficit of roughly 109,000. Good news is our additional interest, I felt confident where we could up that from 250 to 270,000. As you know, we daily invest, currently get about 4.15% interest, which is great. Preschool funding, that was up this year, which is great to see. And then due to our student drop that we had, the state has funds called enrollment stabilization, which is Section 29.7 of the State Aid Act, where they give some money back. So that's a $44,000 increase, which is, stops the bleeding at least on the enrollment side. For expenditures, you can see that we're down. If you look at the difference, this big one, 986, this is where we have a lot of grants. Since we weren't able to recognize them, we then backed them out, and like I said, we will look to use those as carryover funds for the following year. Here is a different way of looking at the same level expenditures. This is by object code, so this breaks it down by salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies, et cetera, but still shows that's a $431,000 drop from revision one to the current final budget. When we look at major changes, like I said, we're really looking at that grant recognition, where we're looking to true-up expenses based on expected actuals. Anything that we don't use that was categorical funding will be carried over for next year. The other big one, where you may have saw some increase in salaries and benefits was due to a 3% ORS reimbursement. We just received, I think it was a little over 300,000, that we'll recognize 200,000 this year, and another one 100,000 next year. Then tuition to other schools. Currently, we have a, we're about one top in the county for sending kids to what's called my school at Kent. It's a tuition-based program, and you know, I was looking at, you know, what other districts were charged, and Kennewah Hills, which is roughly about 2,900 students, just shy of where we're at. I think they were at 29,000, and we were at 272. So the good news is, is we have a lot of kids taking advantage of it. The bad news is, it comes at a large cost to our district. And in prior years, we only had about $125,000 hit, so that's up pretty significantly. So we'll need to take a look, you know, just where we go from there, you know, obviously, kids are taking advantage of it, which is great, but maybe that need could be done in-house so that we didn't have to pay another district to do something that maybe we could do in-house. So more conversations to come, I think, on that, is that would be, you know, something that we'll need Rob, you know, and Tony to get involved in, but just a little bit from the outside looking in. Okay, moving forward to 2526, revenues, you can see drastically up on the 300, which is our state sources. This is where the foundation allowance, the enrollment comes in. This is where all the categoricals come in, and luckily for us, that's where you can see it's up 1.7, almost 1.8 million. We have a lot of that carryover funds that we decreased. Well, now we can take that and shift it over to this year to hopefully offset some of the grants we'll talk about. Other than that, though, the federal sources, you know, unfortunately, we're losing two big grants of 11T, which is related to ESAR funding, and then also Health Resource Advocacy Grant, which is another 90,000. So. Okay, so looking forward to 2526, enrollment projection, we have at 3,024 for next year. We just talked about the 3,076.99. You can see we're down then an additional 52.99 FTE. Part of this, we already know, that's the February count that came in at 3,063. The other 90% will be this upcoming fall count, which we don't know. However, what we do know is our 2025 senior class this spring accounted for 241.2 FTE of our student enrollment. Unfortunately, the classes that we've seen since COVID in our K5 have really, they're averaging more in the low 200s, and therefore, it's really hard to say we're going to have 240 kids like we've had in the past, when the past few years, we just haven't had that. So with the outgoing class being higher than the incoming, naturally our enrollment will drop. So that's where, you know, we could see enrollment down 3,024 for our blended count. Big questions on there, you know, obviously, is what does kindergarten do moving forward? I'd like to say we're optimistic that, you know, numbers will rise again. You know, obviously, we have new apartments being built, but we also have declining birth rates, and that's not just here at TK, that's around the county, around the state, across the country. But that's why I think it's so critical that we have this building and bring GSRP back to TK so that we can get to know our families when they're third, three-year-old, four-year-old, to build from the ground up, because that's how we're able to know our enrollment moving forward, is because they're part of our system, and we know from one year, they can go up to the next grade or not. So just little information on that. Foundation allowance, next year, we're looking at $10,000 per student, which is a 4.1% increase, or $392. So far, we have heard from the Senate and from the governor. The governor was at 10,000, the Senate was at 10,008. We have yet to hear from the House. They are expected to come out possibly as soon as this week, and we'll see what goes from there. But a lot of times, we have an idea of where things will shake out probably by the end of June. Everything that I'm hearing, though, is it could be September till we have a finalized budget from the state of Michigan. Okay, other taxable revenue changes, strong taxable value growth we're looking at. I have budgeted 4.5%. One thing I'll have to, you know, we lowered our interest revenue. Obviously, we're facing a deficit budget. On top of that, we're facing declining interest rates, so naturally, the amount of interest revenue that we bring in will decrease. Preschool tuition, we had to back out 150,000, and that's because we're going to now have GSRP. You know, what we had of two sections, how many sections did we have of GSRP versus a four-year-old? There was four and four, I think, this year? Six, okay. So we'll have some revenue next year, but not as much as this year. But the good news is, we have GSRP that will have significantly more, but that's on a separate slide here. So 147C funds, this is also why the state resource line item was significantly up. We have $3.6 million looking to come our way. Unfortunately, this is money that flows through our district. We then, we get 3.6 million, you know, roughly every month, and then on top of that, though, we get an invoice for the same amount that we have to pay back. So unfortunately, that is a net zero impact, but you'll see that on revenue, and then it's also budgeted on expense. 147A4 is another retirement, but this is one that we actually typically get to keep. However, in the latest budget, this money that we had allocated in 2425 of where we received 1.238 million is going away. So, and what they did to offset some of that is to lower some retirement rates, which we'll get to on the expense side of things. So here's the nuts and bolts of everything. These grants that no longer are anticipated. Now, this is on the revenue, but you'll see it on the expense side. We have this HRA, we have 35J, we have 23G, we have 11T in Section 97 that we are not anticipating coming back for next year. So that is where we had to save some money from the 2425 categorical money that we can take to have in the 2526 so that we can absorb these costs. Otherwise, within these categoricals or grants, we have staffing, we have programming. If we don't have the funds, it's possible it's either general fund hit, or, or we're cutting. So this was a way that we can hopefully absorb these costs into the 2526 budget. Okay, this is taking a look at the 2526 from the, what I call function, or it kind of looks at like the programs that we have in total. But in total, our expense is up 2.476 million. Based out on that, we also have it based on the object level, from the salaries to the benefits, and that's where you see a large influx of new, new money being spent for next year. Okay, so part of the assumptions I had to do, and had to make some tough calls, were on staffing. So in total, our K5, we are reducing four total sections in the grades shown attached there, with adding one at second grade due to the enrollment coming up. With that being said, I have on the far right column, the adjusted class size. This is taking the expected students divided by the number of sections. In every scenario, they are under the TKEA contractual limits, and nobody has been laid off or terminated because of this. This is all done through attrition based on either retirements or people taking leaves of absences. Okay, other staffing adjustments. Due to caseloads, we had to hire an ASD teacher at our high school. Our middle school, we had to add one. Unfortunately, we were able to absorb a high school resource room through a retirement, and this is a one-year-only. So unfortunately, I think next year, based on anticipated numbers, we will have to hire this next year, but we have a one-year reprieve of this, which we'll gladly take. That we will no longer have a dean of students at Page, as well as we're going to be adding an HR director for next year. Okay, I want to preface this slide by saying, we do not have settled agreements on the teachers or support staff. We're in active negotiations. So I had to put something in, though, for our budget. So with that, and administrators nonrepresented is at step at 3%. The GSRP staff that we have, we brought those over from the Kent ISD. They already had a settled contract for us to get them over. We just took that salary schedule that they would have received, should they have been a Kent ISD employee, and now made them. That's our agreement for over here. Okay, that 1.238 million that I talked about that we won't have in revenue, this is how they try to offset that. There are numerous retirement rates within, based on when you were hired and what plan you're part of, but the highest rate that we have for next year is 29.91%, where in this current year, or prior year for last year, was 31.36. So we will have some offset based on that retirement rate going down. Insurance rates, we have what's called the hard cap, and this is going up by 2.9% for the year 2026. Those are the rates that you have in front of you of a single person, two-person, or full family. Outside of that, we also have ancillary costs such as dental vision, LTD, life, stuff like that. So, so that's on the insurance aspect. So here is once again, the assumptions that I have in there of the categorical loss of all those different funds. Like I said, here, many of these grants include staffing and/or programming, but looking to absorb these categoricals within 31A or 31AA, which appears to be getting an influx of new funds, depending on if you look at the governor or the Senate, and then also with the money that we're anticipating in carryover funds. Okay, GSRP, this is new this year. This will be a new grant via Kent ISD, who has ran it in the past. But moving forward, we are looking to have 128 anticipated slots, and this is based on, in this building right now, we have 10 classrooms. Eight of them will be dedicated to GSRP. If you look at 16 per classroom, times eight classrooms, that's where you get the 128. Funding is a little bit different. You actually get a higher per pupil allocation for GSRP funding, for a four-day program, of which we are looking to do next year. It's 10,577. Unfortunately, the ISD, they are the fiduciary, fiduciary agent of this grant, and still have responsibility. They are withholding 7%. So our net difference would be receiving that 93.6 number, times the 128, but you can see, we will now have 1.25 million in revenue. We also had four classrooms that will be qualified for what's called a new startup grant, and so that's 160,000. But with this being said, you know, our, we'll have a new salary schedule. Our staff will now get benefits, which is great, and, you know, and the grant will pay for it all, and maybe even have a little bit left over. So, great news on that, and ultimately, this is free preschool now for all families based on whether you have income, you don't, what have you. You know, I just hope we meet the needs of our community to make sure we have slots available. With that being said, we will only have, I think, one section dedicated to three-year-old preschool, but we will still have some programming on that level as well. Okay, now take everything I just said and possibly blow it all up, because right now there is just great uncertainty. We have no state budget, could be September, and like I said, yet, yet to receive the House. We'll see where that comes. But after that, it'll go to conference committee, and then ultimately to the governor to hopefully have a signed budget. But that, like I said, could be September before we know on that. Federal budget, typically, I have our title allocations by now. I still do not have that. I think we're okay for 2526. I think the real concern for me would be 2627. You know, if you watch the news, you might hear, you know, hey, what's going on with the, the budget at the federal level? You know, are we going to have a education department, are we not? What's going to happen? I don't know. Obviously, enrollment, that's something to be concerned about. Like I said, we have contracts that are unsettled, and then still outstanding and not budgeted is what's called House Bill 6058, which they are talking about an additional 7% on top of that 2.9% when it comes to insurance cost. So it seems to be fading, but we'll see in the coming months what shakes out of that. Okay, I'm going to take a sip of water. Okay, so that was general fund. I'll try to not have so much detail moving forward as the other three funds. So here again, though, you have the actual appropriation budget, and then what we're looking to pass tonight of the final budget, and the 2526 appropriation budget. All in all, we're taking a hit this year, but it's been done, I think, I would say with intent. If we have too much money on food service, you have to have a spend-down plan. We still have a healthy 20% fund balance should we come hit these numbers. But in the large scheme of things, we added a lot of new equipment this year that I think was drastically needed. And next year, we're back to having a surplus with not needing so much equipment and furniture. So with that being said, yeah, in 2324, you could see our numbers went down. We did have a couple big grants to the 260,000, so that's where you could see 2324 to even where Chris had the appropriation one decrease. But this year, some of the investments that we did, we had that hydroponic system to have fresh vegetables, you know. Hopefully, you guys have tried it. I've heard it's very good. But then also cafeteria tables, we updated at Middle School, Lee in McFall. On the revenue side, Jessica does a great job for Alcart and Catering, where you had over 100,000 and 30,000 respectively. One thing I really like to take a look at when it comes to food services, what are we serving for meals? So I took a look at our breakfast year from 2324 to 2425, and you know, it's minimal on the increase, but when you take into account that we had a drop in student enrollment, that's actually a huge win for our district. When kids eat, we know they test better, it's better for kids' education. So I think this is a huge win that we should celebrate, and kudos to Jessica on that front. From a lunch perspective, we're also up a little over 2%. And, yeah, so in total, we served over 500,000 meals this past year. Looking forward to 2526, really, you know, minimal changes in terms of revenue. One thing, you know, obviously, if we have a student enrollment drop, this is where a lot of our funding comes in, is we get a per pupil, you know, per, per meal that is served. So that will be typically directly correlated to our enrollment. Expenses, the reason that we're going to have a surplus next year is, we've reduced the expenses that we don't need to buy new cafeteria tables, new hydroponic system, nothing like that. It does look like we may need to do some work at the walk-in cooler freezer at the middle school, so more to come on that, but that's what I know at this point. Student activities, very healthy. I mean, if you just take a look at the very bottom, we're up to almost 50% that we're anticipating for a final budget. Now, with this being said, this, this is very hard to predict. These are, for those that don't know, student activities are, this could be your baseball account, football account, OM account, you know, any different club that we may have, they may have a student activity account where they fundraise, and then maybe they buy shirts or something for the club. So with that being said, we currently have 107 different clubs that we have to track, not only the revenue, but the expense for each club. So unfortunately, there's no real good way to accurately predict when someone's going to fundraise, or when they decide, hey, I want to buy some shirts. So for what we did for the 2425 school year, what I did was took the actual expenditures and revenue from July 1 through May 30, and then took a look at what we did last year in June and added it to it. I don't know if that's good or not, but that's the best I got for trying to figure out what we look to do. For 2526, it's even more of a crapshoot, I think. I just looked at trendline data, looking past the past three years, and tried to take averages, and we'll roll with that. We'll see what shakes out and adjust accordingly. As we know more, we do more. So, but overall, extremely healthy in terms of fund balance, and typically, these accounts are in the positive, because you have to have money in your account in order to expend the account. So. Okay, public library fund. This was new to me this year. I've never had a public library in my control, but I, in short, this is a very small budget of roughly $30,000, and it is bleeding money as we speak, from the actual budget in 2324. You can see it took a hit. We were projecting one. I don't think it's going to be as bad as it was, but we are going to take a hit of another 5,000, is what I'm estimating. While it has a 19.61% fund balance, that's only $7,000. And then when you go out one year further to 2526, we have $1,100 to our name in this account. If things don't change, it will become a general fund where we have to subsidize this library. So overall, 30,000, you know, the revenue, it's either penal fines, or we get from our four counties, and then just very limited state resources from an expense. You know, it's obviously someone to operate that, and then we pay Lakeland, which Um, and then we pay Lakeland, which is the program to operate, you know, the books and what's coming, what's going, so they can track it. Um, and we have very minimal that goes into books, only two thousand dollars per year. Um, so there's really not a lot of flexibility within this grant to do much of anything. Um, but like I said, uh, after next year, and maybe even next year, it may run at a deficit. I mean, we're talking now eleven hundred dollars, so not much. Okay, last but not least, wanted to talk about our, uh, tax levy operating. Uh, so next year, we will be levying eighteen mils on non-homestead property. Uh, for what non-homestead is, this could be your industrial, commercial, and second homes. This is not your primary residence that you live in. So this generates three and a half, uh, million dollars for the district, uh, within our general fund. Uh, if we didn't have this approved, uh, this would be a big problem. Uh, TK just did it last May, um, we did it, uh, uh, May of twenty-twenty-four, I believe, uh, for ten years. But we're in what's called a headly rollback situation where that's, where the taxable value exceeds the CPI or the Consumer Price Index. Um, fortunately for us, you guys passed a point-five mil override in addition to, it looked like you had, uh, point-nine-nine-two-three mils, uh, already in there. So in total, we had, what I saw is one point four-nine-two-three. Um, based on the county's, uh, millage reduction fraction, uh, they came in at point-nine-eight-seven-one. So we will be eating part of that one point four-nine-two-three mils, but that's what it's there for. Uh, so moving forward, uh, our max allowable millage will be nineteen-point-two-four-oh-eight. So in the, you know, so that's one point two-four-zero-eight, you know, uh, that we'll have for the next remaining years of that ten-year. Um, but that, at the end of the day, you can never levy more than eighteen mils, and that's, uh, what we'll have. Okay, debt service levy, um, once again, will be at nine point six-five mils. Um, this is, now this is on all property, so if you live in the district, unfortunately, you will be hit with this. Um, broken out by these five different qualified debt funds, that means that we are backed by the state, um, can borrow from the school bond loan fund. Um, the good news, though, is, um, if there is one, I guess, it's, it's gonna be flat. We're not increasing, but we're not decreasing. Um, but this generates an estimated nine point four million to pay down our debt obligations, uh, moving forward. So this that we have has been completed by, um, PFM, they're out of Ann Arbor, they're our financial advisors. Uh, when we pass the millages that we're gonna levy of the eighteen mils and the nine point six-five, that's on what's called the L-dash forty-twenty-nine, we'll have to get some signatures tonight. Um, Truand Law also reviewed that to make sure, uh, we're compliant. And then just wanna put a note in here of, we have really strong, uh, taxable value growth right now, which is great news, that will give us financial flexibility down the road, um, which is tremendous to have. Um, and with that being said, I just wanna end with, this is where I see our taxable value, uh, this is the last ten years. Uh, you know, so from going from a five-hundred-and-sixty-five-million-dollar district to almost a billion-dollar, uh, wow. There is a lot of growth, which is great to see. Um, and those percentage increases will pay dividends when we go out for future elections or just to give us financial flexibility to possibly, uh, reduce or, uh, see where we wanna go with that. So, all right, I apologize, but that is all. Thirty-five, man, that's a record, so. Any questions that anyone may have? I know I threw a lot of information at you guys, um, apologized, as there was a lot to go over, but... So tonight, uh, within the action items, you'll have eight budget proposals, um, four for the final budgets, and then four for the appropriation for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, so.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, thank you, Mark.
A lot.
Sorry, that's a lot of information, I... We'll get back to the...
Okay, all set?
All set on my end.
Okay, uh, consent grouping. Consent grouping items will be, uh, adopted in one motion with a roll call vote. Uh, if there's anything that anybody would like to see removed for separate consideration, we can do that as well. Otherwise, we'll adopt them all with a roll call vote. There are about twice as many items on here as we normally have, but I think most of you are aware, probably all of you are aware, that a lot of it is, um, uh, routine annual things that we approve, uh, such as authorizing who signs checks and things of that nature, so. Um, with that, um, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion, that the, that the board approve the items of the consent grouping four A through four J.
I'll support.
Okay, I don't know who won the, the seconding, but...
Brenda Gao.
Was that Brenda? Okay, I think she was just louder for you.
Yeah.
Tyler was louder for me. Okay, um, it's been motioned by Brock, then seconded by Hess to approve the consent grouping items as presented. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, could we have roll call, please?
Price?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Hess, yes. Smith?
Yes.
Winger?
Yes.
And Brock?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, board items for information. The only item we have here is committee and liaison reporting, and I'm not aware of any committee meetings that were had, um, other than the finance meeting before this meeting, which covered most of what we just heard, so.
I have one thing to say, I don't know if I can say this at this time, but the TA PRC...
Sorry. Um, sitting with them, there, some people may see there is a circulation for a survey. Uh, I'm trying to recommend public and staff, everybody, to fill that survey out. It's gonna tell them kind of the direction that we need to come as a community and what they wanna do with, working with the local agencies. So they're gonna be having a tent at the Fourth of July fireworks, uh, for questions and whatnot. Um, you should see little QR codes, I think, uh, along the trails and other things that they have. Um, but they're just trying to get as much qual- quality and efficient information as they can, um, there at the TA PRC, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. And that does fit in with liaison reporting, so, thank you for that. Okay, board items for action, the twenty, uh, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five budget amendments. Is there anything you've...
Oh, sorry, uh, no, uh, nothing...
You're gonna go over it again, Mark?
Yeah, I think, you know, that was, uh, part of the budget presentation that I just prepared. Um, but yeah, if you have any questions, feel free to ask, but yeah, nothing else to share.
Okay. All right, is there anything anybody wanted to ask or, or mention? Okay, like to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Education adopt the resolution to amend the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five general fund, public library, food service, and student activity budgets.
Second.
And motion by Winger, seconded by Stanton to approve or adopt the resolution to amend the, uh, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five general fund, public library, food service, and student activity budgets. Is there any discussion on the motion? Could we have roll call, please?
Winger?
Yes.
Brock?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Hess, yes. Stanton?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you for that. Uh, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six appropriation budgets.
The only thing I'd like to add on this is, obviously, a one point four-nine-two-million-dollar deficit is not ideal. Um, you know, should we have to go down this road for a year, we could. Uh, doesn't mean we want to, and, you know, when Rob gets on board, uh, July one, definitely have conversations with him. And obviously, you know, as we learn more from the state budget, federal budget, you know, we'll adjust on the fly, and, um, more to come on this. But yeah, this, obviously, we know this is less than ideal, and, uh, we'll work on it, you know, in the coming months, so.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions or discussion about it? Like to entertain a motion?
A motion that the Board of Education adopt the resolution to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six general fund, public library, food service, and student activity budgets.
I'll support.
Okay, it's been motioned by Stanton, seconded by Brock, to approve the resolution, resolution to approve the, uh, or, uh, to adopt the resolution to approve the, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six general fund, public library, food service, and student activity budgets. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, we need roll call for this as well?
Smith?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Winger?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Hess, yes. Brock?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. New hires. Would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, so, uh, a lot of the hires that we have, I think everyone that we have in front of you is for the upcoming school year, twenty-five, twenty-six school year, due to retirements, what have you. Um, in front of us tonight, we have Sarah Jewett. She is, uh, looking to become our next principal at Lee Ellen Mundering, and, uh, she's up for, uh, up for approval tonight.
All right. Welcome to our meeting. And to the district. Any discussion? Any questions? Like to entertain a motion?
I'll give it a shot. I move that the Board of Education approve Josh Obola, Salzgaber, Abby Nichols, Julia Curtis, Catherine Torrey, Annie Monahan, and Sarah Jewett for employment for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and I apologize if I botched those.
It's been motioned by Hess, seconded by Winger to approve the new hires. I won't read the motion again, but, uh...
Oh, come on.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion's carried. Okay, uh, item D is the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six board meeting schedule. And you s- see that in front of you, so, um...
The only thing I'd like to add on that is, um, for June, we backed it up a week. This is typically pretty early, uh, to go to, just 'cause we don't have the information for the finances. Um, talking with Rob, he agreed. Um, so that is, uh, the third, uh, Monday in June for next year. Then in July, I know we have the fair going on, so we backed that up a week, and then, uh, spring break, it will be the third week, uh, because we're just coming back from spring break, as we always have done.
And you'll see that we added a couple of board workshops.
Yes.
So those are on the agenda to be approved tonight as well.
Are there more details on those, why we're having them?
I'm sorry?
Are there more details on why we're having them?
Um, no, there really aren't at this time.
Are they for the superintendent?
We do have for probably the first one, um, uh, Andy from, um, MLI, uh, has, as part of his contract with us, having a workshop with us with our new superintendent, so that's likely to be the first one. Uh, and then we'll, uh, determine what the second one will be about, but, um...
David suggested it before in prior years of just putting some on this, on the calendar. That way, if, if, uh, we needed them, um, already reserving a date this far in advance, and then if we determine that we don't need one, then we can just cancel it, so.
And then also, it's not on here, but it'd be nice to accommodate, because some of the people who want to attend this meeting, there's other township meetings going on at the same time. And so it's hard to like, they have to choose which meeting to attend. And so I sent on an email asking if there were, instead of, um, the second Monday, to have the third Monday, um, to change some of them, at least like two or three, just to accommodate some of those people, you know, that wanna attend the township meetings. And then, you know, there's already a couple. I think the July one was changed.
July, April, and then June should all be the third.
Yeah. So if we could just do like two or three more to like balance that, so that we're, you know, that if they wanted to come to every, like, 'cause there's a huge gap. So July, and then they wouldn't be able to come again until April twentieth, and then June. So if there's any that we could change in between that to the third Monday, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, and, um, like Mark had, had, uh, replied to the question, uh, it probably would be good to wait till the new superintendent's on board.
That sounds great, yeah. So maybe one of the workshops or something? Okay, perfect, thank you.
Because, uh, certainly, moving it forward a week would be a problem, 'cause finances can't be ready, and...
The only thing I would say from the first week, it's just, it's very hard to close down a month.
And it would be worth looking into whether or not moving it out a week, uh, would be a problem in any way.
Okay.
And certainly, the township can change their meeting dates, too, so...
And that's why I said just two or three of them, you know.
And I think both their meetings and our meetings are available online, too, so there's that.
So certainly worth discussing, though, so.
Thanks.
Thanks for bringing it up. So with that, um, I'm assuming we'll approve it as is for now, and then have some discussion about the possibility of changing any other dates.
Yep, thank you, sounds good.
Okay, like to entertain a motion?
I'll motion that the Board of Education approve the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six board meeting schedule as presented.
I'll support.
Been motioned by Brock and supported by Hess to approve the, uh, uh, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six board meeting schedule as presented. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion's carried. Uh, and the last item for action is the regional enhancement millage election resolution. Is this something you'd like to talk?
Yeah, I can just give a little bit, uh, just the prerequisite that all twenty districts in Kent County will need to do to get this on the ballot, uh, for this upcoming November. Uh, this is something that we currently have, it's a enhancement millage, which is a point-nine mils, uh, for all, uh, families in, uh, Kent County. Um, so this would just be renewing it for another ten years. And, uh, this, uh, for our district, this is to the tune of about one million and forty thousand on a given year, and that goes up or down based on taxable value, so it has been trending upwards. And I believe we get roughly about three hundred and twenty-some, three hundred and twenty-five dollars per pupil because of this. So it is a good thing, uh, for our district, uh, so, anyway, just wanna share that.
And this is a, um, any election or a, uh, resolution for a millage that we've participated in before, is part of the whole Kent ISD, um, and we benefit quite a bit from it, so. Any questions or discussion? Like to entertain a motion?
I motion that the Board of Education adopt the attached resolution requesting the Kent ISD to call an election for the purpose of presenting the electoral, electoral, uh, electoral at a regional enhancement millage proposal.
I'll support it. Been, uh, motioned by Price, seconded by Smith to adopt the attached resolution requesting the Kent ISD to call an election for the purpose of presenting to the electorate a regional enhancement millage proposal. Is there any discussion on the motion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Winger?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Hess, yes. Stanton?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Brock?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, public comment. Is there anyone who would like to address the board at this time? Nobody's... No, not necessary. Okay, well, thank you, everyone. Um, superintendent's report.
Uh, yeah, I don't really have... Yeah, I don't really have much to add, talked a lot tonight, so. But I do wanna just say thank you, you know, obviously, my superintendent stint here is short-lived, and I'm very happy with that. But I just wanna say thank you from the bottom of my heart, just being for being so supportive and just helping me throughout this process. You know, something I never wanted to put onto my resume, but it's not been too bad, and just, yeah, really appreciate everyone's help. With that being said, you know, I got a busy week this week. We're gonna be negotiating with the support staff starting tomorrow. That'll go all day, that'll be the first time that we meet with them. And then on Thursday, we'll be meeting with the teachers, and then also the following week on Tuesday. So, still a little busy for superintendent's side of things, but it's all good, and, yeah, hopefully, get some traction and get these negotiations completed sooner than later. But that's all I have, so thank you.
Well, thank you, Mark. We really appreciate you stepping into the interim role. It's been, it's been great. It's been huge, yes. Thank you so much for that. Okay, as far as Board comments are concerned, the only thing I can think of is, I know there's MASB Academy going on this summer. I don't know if anybody's planning on attending that, but I'd certainly encourage that if anybody's interested in that. I've found it very beneficial over the years. That's the only thing I can think of to add. Is there anything that anybody else would like to add at this point?
I'd like to reiterate the appreciation to the Board and the community for stepping in, and your support staff for filling that hole, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's nobody else, then at this time, we'll need a motion to go into closed session.
I'll motion that the Board of Education move into closed session for the purpose of strategy and negotiation related to collective bargaining.
Been motioned by Brock, seconded by Winger to move to closed session for the purpose of strategy and negotiation related to collective bargaining. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.